Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the mayor and council of the borough of Anglewood Cliffs. Today is June 1st, 2022. It's 8:34 PM and I call this meeting to order. It's being conducted via the Zoom application, so it's a virtual meeting. All residents attending will have an opportunity to be heard, or all public members attending as well. If council can, please turn on your cameras so the public can actually see their government. That'd be great. Madam Kirk, would you please read the statement, actually please read the statement of compliance? Actually, no, on my agenda, we don't have a roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Oh, I don't, sorry about that. We have it. Okay. Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Member Gigugorio? Member Luciano?
Yeah.
Member Park?
Yes.
Member Begatz?
Yes.
Member Kapsaskis?
Here.
Council President Katrubus?
Here.
Attorney Mensch?
Here, here.
Administrator Rets?
Here.
Thank you for doing that. Would you please read in the statement of compliance into the record?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this public meeting, sent to the record and posted on the bulletin board and on the borough website.
Okay, thank you. Please, all rise and recite the flag salute with me, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we can, let's have a moment of silence for the victims of the shootings in Uvalde, Texas and in Buffalo, New York. Let's have a moment of silence for the victims and for their families that we may extend some condolences to them. Thank you for doing that. Just by way of update, we had, we kind of went backwards a bit this week. We had 21 COVID positive results. It seems like it's last week, we actually had nine. So interesting things going on there. We had a memorial day solemn observance on Monday. I thank councilwoman Begatz, councilman Luciano, and councilman Gigugorio for attending. Beautiful day. Resident Ford Hubbard, who's also a pastor, a reverend, did our invocation. Some thoughtful words and a benediction. So I thank Reverend Hubbard for attending. And also it's Ford Jones, Chief Bankman, Chief Mecal for being there as well. Can we have a motion to go into closed session?
Oh.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Okay. We're, we're going to briefly go into closed session to discuss the item on the agenda designated as affordable updates. And to do that, Ms. Porches, can you read the appropriate language?
Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Anglewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. And whereas the minutes of this closed session remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Anglewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-12 for affordable housing updates.
Thank you. So members of the public, we're just going to place you in a waiting room. I think for about 15 minutes. It shouldn't be too long. Okay, let's have a motion to come out of closed session, please. Have a motion to come out of closed session, please.
I'll move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're at a closed session. Thank you to the public for waiting for us. We are now going to move down our agenda and have a discussion of the 22 municipal budget. And I think, Mr. Ras, did you want to start that off? And I thank you for doing so, if you are.
I would like to, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to pull up a spreadsheet that I sent you folks earlier today. That one right there. So this is essentially a highlight.
Make sure I can share the screen.
Yeah, let's share this, please.
Let me share that first.
There we go. Can anybody see that?
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so just, this is just a few highlights on the budget process so far. And then I have some other comments to make. And then just open it up to council on any questions they have. I would like to get out of tonight's meeting, if at all possible, the idea that we could put the introduction for the budget on for the next meeting, which is June 8th. Doesn't mean that you can't amend the budget as you're going through the process, but it starts the formal process. That said, I'd like to, a couple of things on this year's budget, and I need some direction from council. One is, is right now, we're, the budget is recommending a surplus of $1 million. Let me go over, on the left-hand column, you'll see last year's anticipated budget. You'll see a 2022 proposed budget with not as much capital. Then you see the 2022 proposed budget with the capital items that were presented to you at an earlier meeting. I'm going to go down the far right column, which with the proposed capital items, but we can switch should you want. But we're looking at a use of surplus anticipated about half, about two-thirds of what you had last year. For those of you who are maybe new on the council, a surplus is essentially your net. That's what you closed out last year to the good. So when you closed out your $20 million budget, you closed it out with an, with an asset of about $1 million that you could appropriate in subsequent years. The number one goal is to always replenish surplus so that you only use what you can replenish. This is actually a little bit less than what you could use, but it is conservative, as you'll see from the rest of the budget.
Mr. Ras, one second. Laura, can you just check, make sure everybody's in? I'm getting a couple of phone calls, people saying that they're in the waiting room.
Thank you.
No, it seems like everybody's in. I don't see anyone, councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll use it, we're recommending at this time a little bit less fund balance than what you could use. But again, we're trying to be conservative. All of the, all the additional revenues are what you anticipated last year, or what you received last year. Under state statute, you can't exceed that. I'm going to try and scroll down. Can I do that here?
Yeah.
Couple of areas, like I indicated earlier, you've recovered nicely in from the COVID impacts, primarily in your, your police traffic and fines, your construction, all of those I hit, I discussed at the last meeting, but you've recovered, you've recovered nicely from that. So your local receipts are up. You're also getting two grants or sources of revenues that I've highlighted in the yellow box, and that's your American Rescue Plan. It's $560,395. And that's for the COVID relief. And then on top of that, you're getting an NJDOT grant of approximately $200,000. That is, the sole purpose of that is to offset paving. You get that pretty much every year. But you'll see in the far left that the recommendation is, is that we offset capital. And then, of course, we use the NJDOT for offset paving in the highway department.
Excuse me, for the American Rescue Plan, what are you supposed to do with this money?
Well, we're recommending that you use that to offset your capital costs. Do not, under any circumstances, use it to offset operating expenses, because then the next year, you've dug yourself a hole. You're at, you're at a pretty unique opportunity this year between the American Rescue Plan money of $560,000 and the NJDOT grant money that you can, you can afford to increase your capital spending for this year with a minimal impact on the tax rate. So that's what we're recommending, councilwoman, is that you do that. You could, it, it's broad-based what you can use that for. In fact, under the current administration, they dropped any requirements less than $10 million to itemize the use of that money. So municipalities that got $10 million, they could use it however they wanted. But I would recommend the same thing to them as I'm to you, and actually had the opportunity to do that, is use it for one-time expenses or capital. Whatever you do, don't put it in your operating budget, because you will have a big hole next year.
Okay, so the $560,000 is a one-shot deal. That's it?
It is a one, it's actually two years, but yeah, it's, it's a one-shot deal. Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, and then
Can I, Mr. Ras?
Yes.
The, who coordinated that, getting that money in?
All formula-based.
All formulas, okay.
Yep. So coming along, the the, your miscellaneous revenues are up, obviously, primarily because of those funds, but they're down a little bit because we reduced that, that surplus anticipated. The amount to be raised is 16.9 million with the capital, with the capital increases. And your general appropriations, which is really your operating expenses, is slightly down from 2021 by about seven, by about $57,000 or .4%, .04%. You can see, if you come down under the appropriations item where it says additional capital, this is all cash. We're not recommending any borrowing for your capital or any debt for your capital this year. And you would be able to, you, we're recommending an appropriation of 1,176,000. We went over there at the, at the last meeting, and you had a presentation on that, if you want to refer back to that. When you net out the grants, if you net out the American Rescue Fund, the money of $560,395 and the $200,000 in your NJDOT grant, your actual capital cost this year would be $415,000, which is a little bit more than you usually spend, but not out of the ordinary. You'll be able to do a few more roadways. You had some equipment from the fire department, and you'll address some needs, because I think at the last meeting, I shared, budget meeting, I shared that that the departments were in unison, in uniform, in their belief that their capital needs had not been, their capital needs need to really be addressed this year to take care of some longstanding concerns that they had. We did not change your reserve for uncollecteds, which is, which is a good thing. The deferred charges, you've had deferred charges last year. You had $630,000 in some retirements. We believe we've addressed the retirements within the budget. That said, I often caution you that no, in New Jersey, retirees do not have to give you any significant notice that they're retiring. And some, some walk out with some fairly lucrative packages. So just to give you a heads up on that. So I can't, I never guarantee that. The net impact, if you go to the very bottom, if you do all the capital, the net impact is about $250. It's a two cent, it would be a two-cent increase. $250 on a home valued at $1.3 million. We could go back, if you, if council so desired, we could probably increase the surplus anticipated. And we could, and we could reduce the capital improvement fund and reduce that a little bit. I don't know, I don't know if that's within your acceptable range. But given the capital that you'll be doing and the continuation of the services that you're providing in the municipality, I'll leave that up to you folks, but I think it's fairly equitable. I always like to go over something very quick, something as well, too. I call it forces driving the budget. This over, this over, this budget overall is a 200,000, all appropriations in is $200,000 more than it was last year. So less than 1%. The revenue, you had some revenue reductions, which I've already mentioned, was the loss of, is a recommended reduction of 467,000 in fund balance. You had a reduction in receipts from delinquent taxes of 163,300. There's a flip side of that. Your tax rate and your tax collection rate is so great, you don't have many delinquent taxes to collect. Okay, so that's the good sign about that. So in total, you have about 630,000 less in revenues than what was anticipated last year. Your general appropriations, even though the overall appropriation went down, you're, you had an increase in your property casualty and insurance of 130,000, a 90,000 projected increase for your health insurance. And I indicated already that you had the 415,000 increase in your capital expense. One other item is that the library, it's one of the first things I had, I was charged to do with council was to look into your library services. I've spent a great deal of time talking with the library director at Fort Lee in with Bergen County. You had residents who wanted to have access to something called buckles and libbies, which essentially would allow you to utilize all the Bergen County library, library materials. With your arrangement with Fort Lee, you only get what Fort Lee has access to. However, in order to go with the full Bergen County array, you'd have to appropriate the equivalent of your third of the mill. You currently pay $150,000 for library services. If you had library services at the third of the mill, which is what you would have to contribute to own, to run your own library, it would be $1,155,000. So I'm going to say right now, I'd stay with the $150,000. And I'll report back, I've already spoken with the resident about it, and she kind of figured that. But we did go through the exercise and clearly illustrated the reason you're going with Fort Lee.
Okay, thank you very much for your services.
So I, I, you know, again, the direction I'm looking for besides specific departments is if you want to try and increase that fund balance a little bit. I'm a conservative guy. I like to keep my money as long as I can. But in this case, you, we are recommending a little bit less than what you're replenishing. And then I could, I could adjust that capital improvement fund, probably bring this budget in very close to what you, what you, the tax rate as to what you had for last year.
So Chris, my view is that our residents are not being well-served by the federal government, the state government, or the county government. The very least we can do as a government, the entity, is keep taxes the same or lower them.
Exactly.
And, and at least send a signal to the other governments that they need to do what we're doing. They did do their jobs better. And I thank you for really a good presentation, very clear. We appreciate that.
Mr. Ras, can I ask you a few questions, please?
Of course, council member. The answers or not is a different matter.
Thank you, sir. I see on the first sheet, revenue detail.
Yes.
And since, you know, I just have some concerns that why we're using realized revenue as a starting point for 2022's budget. That's always, seems as though like construction code last year, 220, 246, this year, 381, we're going with 381. Seems to me always to be conservative would be to not fully realize what your last year, your prior year realized revenue was. It seems like we're setting ourselves up for a little bit of, a little bit of trouble.
Yeah, I think what's, what's unfortunate there is, is that first column is your anticipated budget. And that for 2022, you actually realized 381, 480. And it's, that is actually less than what you received in 2019 and 2020 before COVID. You were getting more than that. You've already spoken about, you have some major projects coming on the, on the pipe, on the pipes as well, too. So while, while the numbers that you're seeing are what you had anticipated, or what you had actually received the previous year, they're still, most of those are still less than what you received before the COVID cycle hit. We went back and checked every one of them.
Okay, I'm just, like I said, that's makes me a little nervous. I mean, even like police traffic fines, 55,000, we brought in 112. We're anticipating next year, 112.
Yeah, but
I'm never a fan of going with 100%. And I understand, and I appreciate your explanation. I'm just a little concerned that, you know, anytime I see that during, during the budget process, that we're going with 100% of prior year's anticipated revenue, you know, first off, you, you're hurting yourself by not building surplus again for the next year, which you know, as well as I do, that's a set of self-building for your, for your surplus for the next year.
And if, and if, and in going through these, the accountant looked at your, auditor looked at them as well, too. But we went through and we made sure that those numbers were sustainable. That's your, that's the biggest risk is are those numbers sustainable? We feel comfortable that they're sustainable.
Okay, thank you. So another one, I saw, excuse me, recreation fees. How come we're not putting anything in for recreation fees in our 2022 budget?
Well, because under the state statute, and if you don't have the fee structure in place, you, you can't anticipate those revenues. So you do have some fees, a fee structure in place. It's only a few thousand dollars. The rec director has come to, come to me for, has spoken to me about a new free fee structure, because you're going to be running a lot more programs. You'll see that prior, I would like to get it before you, prior to my leaving. And then once that's in place in 2023, you can start anticipating revenues based on that.
Yeah, once it's all the schedule set up. Thank you very much. But now we didn't realize any revenue this year, rec. I thought we just started this new programs, new director. How do we not have any?
Right now, right now, I'm going to check on that, councilman, because again, I don't want to misspeak. But that, let me see what, if anything, you have received. And it could be minor amount, but
Chris, Mr. Ras, we are receiving those revenues. It's just that for the budget process, they fall out of it.
That is correct. Unless they were in last, unless they were in a previous fee schedule, they'll fall out of it.
So what do you estimate 2022 recreation fees?
Well, if you go with his new fee schedule, if you can get that implemented, you could be looking at 800, excuse me, 80 to 90,000, maybe as much as 100,000. That, he's collecting some very good revenues for the summer camp. He's got, he's got a good sign up for the summer cap. That said, and I'll go back to the council member Luciano's issue is that money now would revert to what's called Myrna, which is municipal receipts not anticipated. And that then converts to your fund balance.
Oh, yes, I know about Myrna. And I, can I ask you a question also? Can you tell me what? Excuse me. You said that we're going to use $1 million in proposed surplus.
That's recommend.
And yes, then it's less than what we used last year. What was the balance of surplus at last year when we brought in a million, four, six, seven?
Yeah, hold on. You're increasing, your surplus is actually going up. So hold on.
It's going up. Okay, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, your surplus is going up. It did go down for a couple of years, but it started to come back up.
Well, if you look at that first sheet, and you see that, you know, construction was at 246, and we came in 381, right there's a good builder for your, for your Myrna.
Yeah. Well, and also 19, you only used 221,000 of your fund balance. So your, your, your fund balance as of January 1st, and you appropriated that, you, let me, let me double check it, but you
If you could look into that for me, please.
You've almost doubled, you've almost doubled your fund balance.
And do you happen to know if there's anything built into this budget for potential lawsuit exposures?
Well, you have
We know that we're in, I mean, and that was another question. I'd like, I'd also like to find out, leading in with that same question. I see that there's $2 million in the budget this year for loss for legal, on the legal line.
A little bit, a little bit more than that.
Right, a little more than two. I'm just, I'd like to know what that's anticipated for, the 2 million. I know last year it was a million seven. It seems like, you know, we talked this whole year and last year about wanting to wind down some of this stuff. I think that if a presentation of some sort could be given to the council and the public as to what the $2 million in, in legal fees are for and and if this budget actually has, I mean, we know, we know right now, we're in litigation, and there's a potential for anywhere from 200 to $300,000 in, in legal fees that we might have to pay.
Well, I could tell you, and you got, and you got on your earlier submissions, you got a spreadsheet that, that goes over the attorneys in the legal services. You've got borough labor, borough and labor attorney, 400,000, legal tax appeals, 40,000, special attorney, 410, Oprah litigation, which is a new one, is 190,000. You've got, so
That's less than a million there.
That's 1,400,000.
Okay, still looking for another 960.
Well, you got more than that. You got 1,500,000. And a line item that's, and I'm going to recommend, I'll talk to whomever wants to, but I'm going to recommend that you put your, all of your legal services in the same place. That way, if there, one goes over and one is less, depending on the line item, you're only, you're, you have it within the account, and you can address it, you can expend it.
That's what I'm really looking forward to see, what, what, if there's anything in this budget that is accounting for any potential liabilities, because I know, I know a quarter, I could think of one right now, quarter million dollars.
Well
Which is, you know, you know
Are you talking about fees or payments, Mr. Councilman?
Well, either one, fees, fees or costs, legal fees and costs that we're in a potential lawsuit for right now.
Legal fees, your legal fees, you've got 2 million, 2 million 21, $2.1 million available for legal fees. Your costs are, are, you don't know, you don't always know how much your, your liability insurance is going to pay. You do have a high deductible. All of those things come into play.
I'd like to just see a breakout on that.
Well, that's the problem. I can't give you, I can't give you a, you could list all of what they're claiming, and we can talk, I could talk to Matt about this. You could listen to what they're saying their damages are, but that's not the same thing as, as a settle or a client, you know, or a verdict as to what the actual claims are.
I understand that. I'm just looking for, to have some type of feeling for what we're anticipating those. With all due respect, sir, for someone, and not you, don't take this you personally. For someone to come and just tell any of us, councilman, oh, there's 2.1 million in there for legal fees. Well, I just want to know what is in our thinking of what made up to 2.1 million.
Okay. All right, let's go over that. You've got 1,580,000 for COA. And you spent 863,000 last year. So you actually had a balance left in there. You have I went over the, the attorney, the actual attorney's fees a second ago. Let me pull I went over the, the attorney, the actual attorney's fees a second ago. Let me pull them back up. You had borough labor attorney last year, you appropriated 400,000. You actually spent 475.
Mr. Rass, we don't need to do this right now. If we just put this together and distribute it to us, so we all have it.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying you do have it, but I'll, I'll send it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send it. It's under the, the spreadsheets that you got last meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's in there. And if you take a look at it, as with anything on the budget, any council members, if you're looking at it and you have some questions, you can email them to me and I'll try and answer them. Of course, I'll circulate it to everyone.
I'll circulate it to everybody. You know, I went through the line, so I mean.
Yeah, okay. So again, I'll recommend that that one, that COA money be inserted in the, in your legal account, because then it gives you legal account more flexibility. Should you go over one outline item, you'd have money available from another line item.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we could stop sharing. So with that, I don't know if there's individual departments. We went over the big ones last meeting, but if there's any other, we went over legal right now. If there's any other questions that you might have, I can try and address. Otherwise, I can get this with the direction I got from council. I'll guarantee you, I'll bring it as close to a, a neutral impact. And we'll bring it before, and we can introduce it at the next meeting.
Thank you. I agree with you on that. And to the council, again, the documents that were shared with you over the last couple of weeks contain all the answers. And Mr. S, I appreciate you doing all that. Very well put together. Although my favorite slide is still the per capita slide.
Yeah.
What government costs $1.36 or whatever.
Again, I, I avail yourself of any other questions you have. And Councilmember Luciana, I'm going, I'm actually in the process of getting some more information on, on your tax bill, your legal bills at this time, because there are some that we need to address.
Yeah, I think you should actually copyright that page and photograph it for all of us.
Don't worry.
Okay, can we have a motion to open to the public?
I thought we are with the public.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, if you're a member of the public and have any questions or comments, please raise your hand virtually or get my attention. And then we'll call upon you, when you're called upon, to state your name and address and what you'd like to share with us.
Saying I want to make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And that's it. We're done. Mr. Rass and Ms. Porters, I thought it'd take you till 3:00 in the morning to get this done. I, I actually told you both it worked from home, but it all worked out, so.
It did, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So time to go take a run. Okay.
I did this morning, and, and then council president Katruba goes, Mr. Rass, you look tired. Well, yeah, I had a good run.
There must have been a hill involved.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Okay, thank you, councils. Thank you, Mr. Rass. Thank you, Ms. Porters. Thank you to the public. Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Good night all.
Good night.